This is the zoning board of appeals for August 9, 2022. I am joined here by the members of the board, Hugo Perdomo, Joe Mahoney, Marilyn Vega Torres, and Arthur Arsonalt, also John De Priest and Hector Velez, and I am Janice Tatarca. There are a couple of things that we're going to be taking out of order today simply because they're quick and wanting to be moving them, and then we'll go back to the top of the agenda. The first thing is 275 Washington Ave., Margolin Grace has been moved to the 91322 Board Meeting. Do I have a motion to move that? Made by Joe, second by... All in favor? And now we've joined by Joan Conwell, too, as well. All in favor? So the second one we're moving is 2022 30 Hillside Ave., Jay Duca also moving to the 91322 ZBA meeting. Do I have a motion, Joe? Do I have a second? Marilyn, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And last but not least, we have a request from... We have 2022-22, 295 Eastern Ave., move... We're also... That is getting moved to the 91322 ZBA meeting. Do I have a motion? Joe, second. You go. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. We're now going to go back to the top of the agenda, and if you're here for any of those, again, they'll be... We'll be back here on the 13th of... Oh my gosh, of September. 2022-11, 156 Shawmet Street, Juan Gallego for special permit in variance seeking approval for the demolition of a three-family residential structure. Excuse me, where have... Please sit down, thank you. So I know Mr. Gallego cannot be here today, he's being represented by counsel. Would you like to talk with us, give us an update on what's going on? And formal, please, a formal introduction for the record.
Yes.
Ah, look at that, he's done this before, he knows to talk into the microphone.
Again, David Mindlin representing Mr. Gallego. Mr. Gallego is in Columbia on a rotary mission at the present time, doing cleft palate surgery. So he's doing his usual good work in the world. This is... It's not the demolition of the three-family, it's adding a fourth unit in the basement of the three-family at 156 Shawmet Street. There won't be any change to the footprint of the building, the height of the building. There's nine-foot ceiling height in the basement. When we were here the first time... I'm sorry, I'm making sure my phone is off. When we were here the first time, the board had questions about egress to the basement unit and the positioning of the laundry room. That has been addressed in the revised plans, so there's a separate entrance to the laundry room. And there also has been a trash shed added in the back of the backyard area of the building to accommodate the extra trash that the extra unit will bring. So I believe those were the only questions that the board had at the initial meeting. We presented the revised plans to the planning board as well. There's no parking for the building, there never has been any parking for the building. And that's basically it in a nutshell.
John, what did the planning board have to say?
Planning board recommended approval with the following conditions: standing conditions as applicable, design review by permitting line use, it will require a payment into the community improvement trust fund, occupants of the fourth unit will be ineligible to obtain resident sticker parking passes, and a trash be stored in the rear of the palace will not block access from a walkway.
And your client was... You are in a position where if we vote on this in positive, that you can accept these on behalf of your client?
Yes. Mr. Gallego is at the planning board meeting, and he was fine with those recommendations at the time.
Okay. This is still a public... First, let me ask if the board has any questions. If not, I'm going to open it again to the public.
I just want to confirm that there's two...
Talk into the microphone, please.
I just want to confirm that there's two points of egress.
Can you please confirm that there are...
Two points of egress there?
Two points of egress.
Like two entrances in the basement?
No, in the back on the revised plans... I'm sorry, I can't really see it from here.
There's only one...
I don't think...
The point that you had raised involved the laundry room here being... John, I think that's the old plan. I think the newer plan has the entrance to the laundry...
I don't have it.
I thought we submitted that to the planning board, I believe.
Yeah, you probably did, but I don't have it.
Okay. Could you bring that other one back up again, please? So instead of an entrance this way, there's a door over there, if you can see where I'm pointing, into the laundry room, as well as the exit out the back for that unit.
So there are two points.
Okay, okay.
Okay? Thank you. Any other questions before I open it up to the public? This is still a public hearing, this will be your last opportunity to speak on this, if you're so inclined. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on this matter? And anybody who wishes to speak has to come up and use the microphone, please, okay? So is anyone who wishes to speak on this? There being none, I am closing the public portion of this hearing. Sir, would you like to walk through the variance issues for us with... Because you know that that is... Since this is a variance, you must meet each of the four requirements. The variance is sought because of soil... John, we're looking for a variance for what specifically, so that we can be clear about that?
Lot size, minimum lot size per unit.
Max... So minimum lot size, maximum floor area ratio, and number of off-street parkings, but the parking is for...
All right, so minimum lot size, lot size per unit, lot frontage, floor area ratio, minimal usable open space.
Okay, so those are the things we're looking for, and so the variance is sought because of soil conditions, shape or topography of such land or structure, and especially affecting such land or structure, but not affecting generally the zoning district in which it is located.
So this is a long, narrow lot with an existing three-family house on it. The abutters are very close to the property lines, as they are in most of these neighborhoods. There's no opportunity to acquire any additional land to resolve any of the zoning and dimensional anomalies here. That's basically it.
And you're not changing the building at all?
Not changing the building at all, except for adding that shed in the back, which is to the benefit of the neighborhood and the residents of this building, but there's no change whatsoever to the building. It's going to be exactly as it is, and there's no opportunity to add to the building either.
Yes, guys, yes?
Yes.
Yes? Joan? Yes, okay, yes. A literal enforcement of the provisions of this chapter would involve a substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, to the petitioner or applicant.
Well, any literal enforcement of the provisions, first of all, it's virtually impossible in this situation because it is an existing non-conforming use. In addition, one of the reasons Mr. Gallego wants to do this is to improve the building. And in order to do that, to sprinkler the entire building and just to upgrade it in general, he needs this extra unit financially, and it just makes for a better project. He wouldn't be able to do it without... And sprinkler the building and put all that money into it without being able to add a fourth unit to it.
And as constructed, it's already not in compliance with the provisions of this chapter?
Correct.
Yes? Yes? Desirable effect may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good.
Well, again, this is a fairly typical building for the neighborhood. Apartment buildings are allowed, a lot of three-families, multifamily houses on small lots. It's very close to public transportation. We've already discussed the requirement of... Well, it has no parking to begin with, so it's only one or two additional spaces that would be required, but it will not burden the neighborhood at all, and the expansion fits in with the tenor of the neighborhood.
And John, we have not received any negative comments on this?
Correct.
Okay?
Yes.
Yes? Yes? That's yes for all of us, Ricky. Desirable relief may be granted without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent or purpose of this chapter.
And again, this somewhat overlaps with Provision C. This is the R2 district, which allows for one-to-three-family residents as well as apartment buildings. So again, it fits in with the neighborhood, it won't substantially burden the utilities or any public services, and it'll benefit the inhabitants of the city by increasing the availability of new housing with a nice unit.
Yes? All in favor, yes?
Yes.
Okay, you've met the... According to the board, you have met your conditions for your variance. Is there an interest in voting on this? Joan?
Can I make a motion to approve Case 2022-11 for special permanent variance seeking approval to increase occupancy by one unit with standing conditions applicable?
With the... And with the conditions that John articulated earlier.
And with the conditions that John...
Do we have a second? Joe, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, we're going to return our board member. And we are going to be moving on next to 2022-14, 62 Washington Ave., Bellingham LLC, for special permits and variances seeking approval for conversion of an existing residential structure from a seven-family residential structure with a commercial office to an eight-family residential structure which does not meet the current minimum zoning requirements for lot area, floor area ratio, usable open space, and off-street parking. Are we having you again?
I'm back.
You're back, okay.
Second of three.
Okay.
So I'm David Mindlin, representing the petitioner. This is Ted Lubitz, who's one of the managers and partners in the ownership group for this property.
There's no changes in the building here, right? There's just... It's taking a former business... A former commercial space in an attempt to convert it to a residential space, is that correct?
Exactly. This was, if some of you might remember Jonathan Marcus, this was his Three Hills Real Estate office, along with the seven units. When Jonathan sold his units and Mr. Lubitz's group bought it, they don't need the office, it's been sitting vacant, it's not providing any benefit to the city right now, and converting it to an apartment unit would, again, provide additional very nice new housing. It's two houses from the Greenway and the Silverline, perfect place for it.
John, planning board comments?
Planning board, I recommend an approval with standing conditions and with a condition that all vestiges of the business sign be removed, full sign everything. In addition to that, I'm recommending design review by my department, and according with the ordinance, they'll have to make a payment into the community improvement trust fund, and the occupants of this unit will not be able to be eligible to obtain resident sticker parking passes.
Okay. Are you comfortable with those?
The parking condition, design review, removing the sign... Yes. The community trust fund. I'm not sure... Is there a standard payment? I'm not recalling that, or is it based on the...
On the community improvement trust fund?
Yes.
It's 3% of the maximum build-out cost, and it's prorated based on the amount of relief you get.
You kind of don't have a choice on that one, anyway, so... No, don't do it.
And you all know me with numbers, so I wasn't even going to attempt that.
Are there any questions on the board before I open this up to the public? I don't think so. Okay, this is still a public hearing, this will be your last opportunity to speak on this. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on 62 Washington Avenue? There being none, I'm going to close the public portion of this hearing. Counselor, let's go through the variances again, please.
So as we've already said, there'll be no change to the footprint, the exterior...
Let's go one at a time, let's do what... Just so we can read them for the record. I just want to read them formally for the record.
Excuse...
I'm going to read it formally for the record, again, just so... Even though you've just gone through them, I'm going to read them again.
Sure.
The variance is sought because of soil conditions, shape or topography of such land or structure, and especially affecting such land or structures, but not affecting generally the zoning district in which it is located.
Okay, so again, the project does not involve any changes to the exterior of the building, not to the height, to the footprint, or anything else. This building, for those of you who are familiar with it, sits... It's right on Washington Avenue. It sits on top of the slope which leads down, parallel to the Greenway. There's a long shared driveway leading to the parking lot at the rear of the building that's shared with the abutting property at 64 Washington Avenue by virtue of an easement that's...
And it's a BR district, correct? It's a BR district?
Yes. And this dates back to... The easement dates back to 2001. There's currently almost no usable open space. To add to open space would mean removing a parking space, which we certainly don't want to do, and the positioning of the building and the slope and shape of the lot make it almost impossible to address any other dimensional...
And again, there's no changes to the building as it exists. Guys, yes? Folks, yes? A literal enforcement of the provisions of this chapter would involve a substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, to the petitioner or applicant.
So the problem is, as I mentioned at the beginning of the presentation, this office is not being used, there hasn't been any interest in anyone renting the office, and right now it's absolutely unproductive space. By adding this unit right on public transportation, just outside the downtown area, in an area that's really becoming revitalized, would be productive... I mean, to let it sit there and be unproductive is just not working for the owners at this point, and that creates the financial hardship.
Ladies and gentlemen? Yes, yes, okay. Desirable relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good.
So again, some of these things run together, but again, providing a new relatively large residential unit makes the property productive, probably less burdensome on public services than would a commercial space or an office at that point.
And housing is always a good thing here in the city. Housing is always a good thing here in the city.
Absolutely.
People?
Yes.
Yes? And last, desirable relief may be granted without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent or purpose of this chapter.
Multi-use... Multifamily properties are absolutely desirable and allowed in this district. There'd be little, if any, additional burden on services, city services, or anything else.
Yes, yes, yes. Okay, then we've met all of our conditions. So is there an interest in voting on this?
Yes.
Joe, do you want to make a motion?
Make a motion that Case 2022-14 be approved as requested based on conditions enumerated.
Do I have a second? Marilyn, all in favor? Yes. And again, with the conditions as John articulated earlier. That's... Okay, yes. Who's going to be the official... John, do we have to... I guess the official ones would be... All right. Whoever... Do we have to identify who the official voting members are?
Well, the official voting members are the regular members of the board.
Okay, right. And... All right, fine. Then not these... Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'm thinking of taking 20217 next, because I'm...
Time to leave to you.
I was thinking we might want to take 20217 Bloomingdale Street next, simply because it's a vote and that 20215 we're not going to be deciding on today, and I think it'll be longer. So is everybody comfortable with us taking that out of order?
Yes.
Okay, we're going to take 202217, 120 Bloomingdale Street, Andrea Garcia, for special permits and variances seeking approval for the increase in the nonconformity of the structure due to the location of the proposed addition within the required front yard setback. Could you please identify yourself for the record?
Hi, I'm Andrea Garcia, owner of 120 Bloomingdale. And can I...
Are you the resident? Is that your residence as well?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead, please tell us.
Excuse me, can you pick up the microphone, please?
There you go.
It won't bite.
And this way you can move with it.
Right.
So tell us again, remind... So John, what did the planning board have to say?
Planning board recommended approval with applicable standard conditions.
Okay. So tell us... So what... Remind us again what it is you want to do.
Yes, so, well, the issue was that this is the front entrance of the home, the existing foyer, and what happened was that right underneath this is... I have a bathroom, like a shot... Like a full bathroom right underneath this, where you see the concrete steps and the entrance, and...
We haven't heard this before, have we? I'm sorry, so I apologize. What goes through...
Right.
And in February, we actually had a big leak. It was right after it was snowing, and there was a lot of rain and all of that, and the ceiling, right where you... This is the shower, and this is the image of the bathroom. The ceiling of the shower was bulging because water was just accumulating. It was accumulating, somehow water was seeping through the front entrance. Once we uncovered the floor, all the plywood, everything was rotten, the... There was basically the joists were just added on, they were like pieced together, it wasn't even done to code at all. And then this is what we saw whenever we uncovered all that, we removed the foyer. So it was a... It was two feet by... Three feet wide by two feet out. So now what we did was, because I already did it, I had spoken to a building inspector, he told me to... He told me to go ahead with it, but I was thinking that it might not be a big issue, but everything was rotten, like I said, it was not done to code. That concrete slab had no support, nothing, it was porous underneath whenever we uncovered the... Whenever we chipped through the concrete. And then this is the outcome. We basically...
So how much bigger is what you added? Did you add something larger than what was there before?
Yes, if you would take a look at the first picture.
So that whole bump... Is that whole bump out new?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so this was... That was the existing one, it's just a small little space, it was two feet wide, that's it. That door was not even working, it was like... Even the inside was just exposed, that door would always be open. So all of that little plywood that was there, the floor area, was all rotten. And then if we go back to the other pictures, this is what we have built, which is a lot more eye appealing, and also it covers the whole... It basically gives me coverage from not ever having that issue again with the water and all the seeping through, and I still have to do landscape on, like you know, on the sides of the foyer, but like I said, my shower, my bathroom, is right underneath this, so everything was rotten, it was not good at all.
So again, just be clear for... So that little bump out is all a new addition?
That's the new foyer, yep.
Okay, and it...
We extended it three feet out.
Three feet out, and by out you mean toward the front or toward the side?
Towards the front, yes, towards the front. This is the front image, right on the front.
So that's the front, so you extended it three feet out to the front?
Yes, right to the property line, basically.
Generally, we're not real fans of asking forgiveness rather than permission.
I know, and I apologize for that, yes. But, um... But yeah, we found... Like I said, it was also snowing in that time and raining and all this, so it was kind of... We had to think fast.
I understand, but just, you know... But we... But we'll take it as, you know, it's...
For future reference, I will not do anything else without asking for permission first, though.
So this is the first... We have... This is the first time we're hearing it, this has already gone to the planning board? So John, and what did the planning board have to say?
They recommended approval with the applicable standard conditions.
Okay, so it will be the first opportunity we've had, so I want to make sure there are questions, any questions that people may have about this before I open it up to the public for the first time. And then you're going to... You know how he went through those variance things earlier?
Yes.
You're going to have to do the same thing.
Yes.
Okay, but we'll walk you through one.
Yep.
So the changes are just one foot, right? That's the difference, basically?
Two feet.
Three feet.
Three feet.
Oh, by three feet?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Because you said that it was two feet.
It was two feet before, and I extended it three, so now it's five.
So it's five feet, five, okay, okay. So it's five feet in total.
Mm-hmm. You go? Okay.
Is this how it was a single, or...
It's a three-family.
A two-family?
Three.
Oh, a three-family.
Yes.
So this is how it looks now?
This is how it looks now, yes.
Okay, the other tenants will go through this door, too?
Exactly, it's a common space, a common area. It's just for mailroom, honestly, for like mail, the mailboxes, it's not... I'm not adding any livable space into any of the units, it's just common area in and out of the home.
There's no green area, grass, bushes?
Yes, on the sides. You can't really see it, but there's a square here, like an area there, and on the other side also. I have green area, like whatever was there prior, that green area, is the same size. I kept it in the same footprint, like I just extended it straight out, I didn't go even wider, I kept it...
Well, that's not the same footprint, because you came out further, three feet.
Right, but the same, like, the same width, I'm trying to say, and in the same area, because if I... The three feet I extended was concrete, it was long concrete steps, that snow would just accumulate and ice and all this stuff.
So like, right now, that shows us that it's right sort of on the lot line. That earlier two feet was also right on that lot line?
The two... It was in the same area.
So you just say, and front is... Okay, I see.
I just want... Yeah, and these are the green areas, like the space that I have here, I have the same space on the... Both left and right of it, the same green area.
She added further to her nonconformity. Okay? Any other questions before I open it up to the public?
So you said three family house?
Yes, so this house is a little... It's a little different, so my unit number one is the basement, you know what I mean? Like, I bought it as a three-family. So unit number one is in the basement, and then it goes two and three, but, um... But yeah, it's a little weird, you can't... It's the tiniest house on the street, honestly. I don't know, but it's a three-family, yes.
It's deceiving from the outside.
It is, yeah, very.
This is... I'm going to open it up to the public. This is the first... This will be the first and last opportunity you'll actually have to speak on this, unless there are major questions. So is there anybody who wishes to speak on this matter? Okay, there being none, we're going to close the public participation portion of this. So when you have... You're asking for variance, and John, the variances are for what? Let's be clear.
I'm bringing it now.
Your variance is for a minimum front yard setback. So again, that's increasing the nonconformity. So you have to talk to us through each of these conditions.
Yes.
And if you have questions, don't be afraid to ask.
I'm nervous already.
Don't be... Don't be nervous, don't be nervous.
The questions are on that paper on the desk.
Yeah, so there you can look at them. But we have to go through each one separately, okay? This variance is sought, and the variance in this case is the front yard setback.
Yes.
The front yard setback is sought because of soil conditions, shape or topography of such land or structure, but not... And it... That basically impacts only your building, but not the general area of... Not the general zoning district. So basically, tell us that, you know, you needed to move this.
Right.
Because you didn't... Basically, there was already a nonconformity, and you moved it out a little bit, is that what you're saying?
Correct.
And you did that because you really couldn't go anywhere else with it, if you were going to improve that?
Exactly. I couldn't... There was no other way to, you know, to go about it, that was the only option we found, and I, um...
You would have had to bump it back through...
I would, exactly. That's the other thing. There's no, you know, there was just no way, but it's not affecting, it's not affecting...
And it's only impacting the structure?
It's not impacting exactly the structure, not any of the neighbors. It's not in the way or anything like that.
Guys? A little, a literal enforcement of this would involve a substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, to the petition or applicant. And this is the case where I'm saying, hmm, make you take it down, but that would be really bad for you.
Yes.
So, so tell us that to, to, you know, to enforce this would be a hardship for you?
Yes, it would definitely be a hardship, especially money and time put into it. But also, it's, if I left, if I would have left it to the way it was, I would have kept having issues. And as of now, we are actually remodeling the whole unit. Because of this issue, whenever we, you know, whenever that happened, we just thought it would be a good idea to just fix it all up, which I do have permits for.
So, so the hardship here would have been structural?
The hardship...
You would have had a structural hardship. Your, your building was compromised if you did not try to fix this.
Yes, it was. Because that's also the entrance, so...
Relief may be granted without detriment to the public good. And all you have to say is not hurting anybody.
Yeah, no, it won't affect anybody, none of the neighbors.
And last, you can do this without, it doesn't get, it does not nullify the intent of this chapter. It has no impact on the chapter.
Yeah, it doesn't have any impact on the chapter.
Okay, you met those. See, it wasn't hard.
Thank you so much. I can breathe.
That doesn't mean we voted yet. That doesn't mean we voted yet. It just means you've met those, of course, we have to vote.
That's the best part.
Now, John talked about standard conditions. There are certain conditions that have to be met, and if you have any questions about them, you can talk to John or Hector later. But that, they're pretty standard things, like you can't put lights, you can't, I mean, there are just certain things that you can't do. And they don't all apply to you, so any that may apply will be applied to any special permit or variance that you receive.
Okay.
And you can ask John specifically what those are going to be, or Hector, what those are going to be.
Okay.
Do we have a motion to vote on this?
I'll make a motion.
Marilyn, what motion?
I'll make a motion to approve case 2022-17, 120 Bloomingdale Street. For special permits and variances, seeking approval with the standard conditions.
Applicable standard conditions? Do we have a second? Arthur, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much.
Now you can breathe.
Thank you so much.
It's gonna take a couple of weeks. Well, it doesn't matter, you already did it. Don't do it again.
I will not, definitely not. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, we are going to now go back in order. 2022-15, 170 Cottage Street, Neighborhood Developers. This is, this will not be the final time we hear about this because it will be going to the planning board on August 23rd and back here to the zoning board on September 13th. But, and, and you will have the opportunity to speak on it now and also at our next meeting. So please come and introduce yourselves. Please remember to use the microphones and good luck. Introduce yourselves with the mics and then get started.
Does this, does this work?
Sure.
Yep. Great. I'm Steve LaFerrera with the Neighborhood Developers.
And I'm Cliff Bomer. I'm with Davis Square Architects.
And we have a few other folks there.
If one of you would want to take the microphone up there and hold it so that you're not having to do that back and forth kind of thing, that's fine.
Sure. And I have one letter that came to our office in support of the project that I just, I know we do that.
Share that with John. Actually, you can either share it with John or with Hector.
Great. Do, do we control it?
This is a letter of support from Sandy Maynard. It's a letter of support for Sandy Maynard, so. Go ahead.
Do we control this or do you control it, John?
John will, John will take care of it. You tell him. You want me to read it more? Do you want me to read it for the record?
No, I meant the PowerPoint. Do we control it or do you control it?
You, you tell me when you want me to move it.
Yeah. And Sandy lives at 52 Chester Ave, just for the sake of clarifying that. Okay. Go ahead. You can stand over here, as you don't, so that we can see it, but you can stand, if you'd like, you can stand over there and see it. There you go.
Can, can you go to the next slide, John? So I just wanted to start off by reminding you that this project has actually already been before you and approved twice. Once by a previous owner who, who approved 66 units. We purchased the site last year and came back for some modifications, actually make the building a little smaller, add some three bedroom units, and to convert market rate units to apartments. Today, we're here for two reasons. First of all, the original permit had been acted on by a building permit and that was pulled out by the previous owner's architect, so we need, we'd need to renew it. And second, we've made one, I think, important change that's really for the better of the project. We've eliminated some large retaining walls, we'll show you, which will result in significantly more open space and a reduction in parking. Let me go to the next slide. So again, I think you all know where this is. This is 170 Cottage Street. It's right a block from the Eastern Ave Silverline stop. Let me go to the next slide. And this is, again, another zoomed out context of it. Go to the next slide. And, you know, we'll talk about this next time when you ask us to go through those variances. It's right next to, to the Silverline and there's some significant topography, as you'll see in the next two photos. So this is looking from the sort of northeast of the, oh, sorry, southeast of the site along the Silverline and the Chelsea Greenway. Then we can go to the next slide. This is looking from Bellingham Street down and you can see the significant grade change there. We can go to the next slide. And then this is, again, for more of like the southeast corner, looking up onto those homes are on Willow Street. And that's where originally we had had a large, or originally the previous owner and us had had a large retaining wall for a driveway. So we can go to the next slide. You know, I want to go through these development goals quickly. Obviously, TND, our goal is to create affordable homes for families, especially along the Silverline corridor, where we can provide access to transportation, jobs, services, and we love the Chelsea Greenway and having families have access to that. Organizationally, we really want to build, build a sustainable and energy efficient building. We're designing it to passive house standards. It'll be our third passive house project in Chelsea with 1005 Broadway and 256 Street. And this is a really great opportunity to create public open space that complements the open space that's already there on the Greenway, as well as private open space for the families. So project summary, this hasn't changed. The top part, 66 apartments, all for rent, all affordable, 12 one bedrooms, 43 two bedrooms, and 11 three bedrooms, so really geared toward families. What has changed is the amount of open space. You'll remember, the original application will go through this, needed a variance. We're now providing over 15,000 square feet of open space and a large public park that's sort of adjacent to the Greenway. We also have, as we do in all of our projects, a community room for use of the residents that's open to the public upon reservation. We're gonna be planting a bunch of new trees, managing some of this open space. We're really excited about that. There's opportunities for public art. You'll kind of see that we've designed into the, into the landscape plan. And we'll have 72 parking spaces for cars and 70 for bicycles. So again, taking advantage of the Greenway and the connection there. Okay, next slide. And again, this is about affordable housing. So 17 of the 66 units will be affordable at really deep incomes to folks at 30% of the area median income or below, and the other 49 will be at 60% of that. And again, that's about 84,000 for a family of four. And as always, we'll do the maximum local preference allowed by law. We'll apply to DHCD for the full 70%. And, you know, we've always been successful in getting that. You know, we're hoping that next month we'll have, that you'll approve this. We're intending to submit a second application to DHCD in October, which is great. Oftentimes, we're successful on the second time. And that would allow us to start construction next fall and have folks in in early 2025. So this chart just sort of talks about the original relief that was granted and how our, our first proposal changed it and how this one changes it. So again, the parking is the big relief and we'll talk about that later. 105 are required. We're proposing 72. Minimum lot area hasn't changed. The rear yard setback, we're gonna go into all these in more detail, but we just highlighted the three that have changed significantly. We'll go to the next slide. And then these relief are no longer requested. These were, you've already approved this relief and we don't actually need it. Again, usable open space, originally they had about 8,700.
Are you gonna agree with that, John, that they've met that? Okay.
So, you know, we have almost twice as much as what was originally proposed.
And same with the FAR?
Yes.
Yep, and the FAR and the lot coverage. So all three of those we no longer need.
So they've changed, so the change that they've proposed has eliminated the need for those three variances?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All of which were previously granted.
Okay, yeah, but that's still good to know.
Okay. And, you know, I'm sure we'll go over this next time, but we, you know, are familiar with the four requirements. And, and again, these were the findings that, that this board already had for this project. So we can go to the next slide.
You'll have to walk us through those formally when we have their...
Yes, happy, happy to have that opportunity, hopefully. We can go to the slide. I'll turn it over to Cliff to talk about the site plan.
Hi, again, I'm Cliff Bomer. I'm a principal at Davis Square Architects. And before I get into the images, I think some of them we can go through pretty quickly. I did want to emphasize why what we see is a really exciting opportunity with these changes. The significant increase in open space is a big one. So in addition to providing that public park space, the, there is significant usable open space in the inside courtyard of that building that wasn't there before, for the most part. It was surface parking in that area. And we know that that will be a great benefit primarily for the residents of the building. And as you know, happy residents lead to long residency, which we think is a good stabilizing influence. We're also, by the elimination of the driveway on the left-hand side, which is the west side, we've increased the pervious surface on the area. So there are environmental benefits by creating more open space that isn't built over or paved over.
When you say the left side, what do you mean?
The, towards Willow Street.
Oh, the left side on Cottage, on Cottage Street, okay.
That was a driveway that led into parking, where you see the usable open space in the middle. And there were a significant retaining wall. I think it got up to 20 feet in that high corner there. So we've eliminated that retaining wall and turned that driveway into open space.
Okay, thank you.
So in, in addition to providing a lot of open space, permeable surface, the usable open space that's within the courtyard, while that is the roof, that's a planted roof, so you don't get direct infiltration that way. It does give us the capacity to control the rate at which stormwater would ever go into the system. So from an environmental perspective, it's a really big, significant change. So having said that, from our perspective, that's what we're most excited about, our environmental improvements, as well as major amenity enhancements for the residents of the building.
Where's the parking going?
Pardon me?
Where's the parking going?
The parking is all down near the purple space. The driveway is where it was, we had a driveway there, as well as a ramped driveway that went up on that space to the west. So we had outdoor parking at an elevated level, as well as parking in the basement of the building. So now what we've done is expanded the basement parking so that all of the spaces now are underground spaces.
Thank you.
We can go to the next one. There you go. I mean, that's easier to see now. I should have showed you that one before. So you can see there's a very big difference on the right-hand side. The amount of paving is way, way less. And it's, we think it uses the site much more. We're able to maintain much more of the existing grades. As Steve pointed out, in order to build the driveway, to climb up the hill, to go under the building, to get to that surface parking, we, we needed to build some really big retaining walls. And I'll point out, that was a remnant of the very original approved design. That was the scheme that was originally approved, how many years ago? Whenever it was. So in any case, we abandoned that in favor of creating much more open space on the site. The next one. This is slightly confusing diagram, but the red lines are what, are the required setbacks, either calculated or just a given setback. The red line along Cottage Street is front setback. We have the rear setback that is along Bellingham Street that, as you can see, the, there are two lines because the 14-foot was the previously approved setback. 20 feet is the calculated, or that's, that's a book setback.
Sorry, 20, 20 feet is what's required there. I think, my understanding is actually a request of this board in the original hearings, which we earned a part of, to create an entrance on Bellingham Street and a connection to there. So I think, I, I actually think that they were closer than 14, but that's what was approved before. So we're actually in essentially the same spot. We do have this spolded facade that juts out about 18 inches there. So I think, again, I think that's actually creating a better connection to the street and I think that's, that's...
Say that again. Tell me, tell me what, I kind of missed that. So what was previously, what's there, what was previously approved and what are you asking for?
What was previously approved was that 14 feet. I'm not sure that that was accurate, looking at what they submitted, but that's what is on the record. And where, we proposed, we proposed seven, sorry, in the original, what we submitted to the, to the denial set, we proposed six feet, three inches. We've since sort of reviewed that and we're really actually going to seven feet, two inches, but we'll, we'll keep the request at six, three. That's fine. But again, this is to create a connection to Bellingham Street. There is actually a door here. It's kind of the second residential level, but we want, but, you know, as I understand, sort of before our...
So you're looking, you're asking, just to clarify, you're asking for greater relief than was previously approved?
We are asking for greater relief and I think it's a little bit...
I'm just trying to clarify what...
No, that's fine. I think it's a little bit of a documentation issue. And the other place we're asking for relief is because the underground garage is actually a structure. You'll see the, the, the relief required here is, or the side setback is 20% of the building height. So our side, our, our side setback would be 11.6 and the garage structure, which is underground, will be at 10.6. So we're within that setback, but again, it's, it's because the parking is underground, so it won't impact, it won't be seen or felt or impact neighbors. And our neighbor there is the Chelsea Greenway, not a resident. So I just, we just wanted to point those two out. And the next slide kind of shows that in a little bit more detail, particularly the parking garage. We can go to the next slide. I'll turn it back to you.
Okay. So back to some images. In this image, we're looking up Cottage Street. The language that we're proposing for the building is what we think we're, we call it the wave, sort of. But what we see it as is a reference to the, as you know, in Chelsea, very common to have angled bays that articulate facades on buildings of different, bays of different heights. This building, which you can't tell from this image, but you'll see in a minute, there are actually no two elevations that are exactly the same in height. The elevation along Cottage Street goes from four stories at the high end to five at the bottom. The short elevation on the east side is five across both. When you're inside the courtyard, there's a four-story elevation. The west side is, is a four-story to three-story. So it's a very complicated relationship with the site. So what we've tried to do with our design is create a kind of reference to the bays that come in and out, that create a kind of sculpted surface to the building. But if they're able to react on every elevation, regardless of how high it is and how it relates to where the grade is. The materials that we're proposing for the angled pieces up above that, that are coming in and out, those are metal panels. The blue area that you see that's exposed is clapboard. And the very bottom of the building is a masonry base. So all of the materials that we're proposing are materials that you do see in Chelsea.
Do you know, as a rule, we always leave project design to the planning department, so we will...
Yep.
So, so just, you know, I'm not, I'm not qualified to comment on that, but we would expect the planning department to have comments and weigh in on situations like that.
Wonderful. Okay, we can go to the next one. Oops. So there's a view right where Cottage Street intersects the multimodal path. That's our end elevation. Stair towers to the right. And you're looking right up Cottage Street as it rises up. This is the five-story elevation I was referring to on the short elevation, which is the east side of the building. You'll notice one, you notice a painted area on the low side of the building. That's a retaining wall that follows very closely our property line. We have a kind of diagonal property line. And for us, it creates an opportunity for public art in that space. This isn't a specific proposal. It's just letting you know that we anticipate being able to use that for art exhibit. Next one. Another image that's close to where the garage entry is. So we're down at the bottom of the site. The public open space is to the right, not in view of the camera. And here you get an idea of that kind of undulation of the bays of the building that's created by that metal wave envelope. Next one. So this is up in the courtyard area, which used to be parking. So you're right now looking from what used to be a parking space into the courtyard space. The kind of gold colored area is a very large community room that now opens up into significant programmable outdoor space for the residents. Next, let me see, another view. We haven't totally programmed what we want to do up on this space, but this is an idea where you can see there's passive recreation and some dining spaces on the right and a little more active space to the left.
You might not want soccer balls near the windows.
Huh?
You might not want soccer balls near the windows.
I should, I, actually, we have an RFPIA for an artist facilitator to help us engage community in kind of figuring out what would be the best use of the space. So this is really representative, not actually what's gonna happen.
I was just being silly. Go ahead.
We could look at the next one.
You'll have a chance to speak afterward, ma'am, okay? You'll have an opportunity to speak after.
So in this image, I think what you can see here is what I was explaining about the complexity of the site, the different types of facades that present themselves depending upon the direction. We're very happy that along Bellingham, it's a three-story elevation, which is very much in scale of the other buildings. And actually, there, our setback that we're proposing is very similar to other buildings on Bellingham. So we think we've scaled that properly. The apartment building across the street from us on Cottage is actually taller than our building is, but you can see that that all... but you can see that that also made an attempt at kind of sculpting their facade by those curved balconies down on the eastern end of the building, and then intermittent balconies along the rest of the length of that building. Next slide.
Was that meant to be solar panels on top?
Oh yeah, thank you. So, don't read this as a specific layout, but as Steve mentioned, we are going for passive house certification, which is the highest level of third-party independent verification system that is completely focused on energy savings and indoor air quality. There are many other third-party certifications that you can get, but we're interested in the one that really, really is the greenest and uses no fossil fuels, is an all-electric building. So we're really looking ahead. The solar panels on the top, typically in a passive house building, you need to feed some energy back into the system in New England. You might not have to in other climates that are warmer. It's funny to say that now, but in any case, we do, we're reserving space, we'll plan our roof. We hope to be able to incorporate panels at the time of construction of the building, but at the dead, dead minimum, we'd be completely solar-ready and have the roof plan organized so we can include panels.
Thank you.
These are, this is kind of boring, but this is the parking, the parking plan. It didn't look like that before, before it was just an L shape. Before we went fully underground with the parking, that section that's inside the L used to be a whole story higher up in what is now our courtyard. So that's where all of the seventy-two parking spaces are, down at that lower level.
And there's only one entrance?
There's one vehicular entry to the parking. We have bicycle parking at that level, too, I think for a comparable number of bikes. I think we have seventy spaces, or we have a lot of bike spaces in the basement, too. This is obviously a great site for having bike storage, given where it's sitting.
And I would just point out, it's hard to see the columns there, but it's not a thick wall over, sort of between the two parking aisles. They're columns, so there's sort of visibility there. We're not creating like a dead end that would be...
Yeah, it's completely...
Say that again, I'm sorry, what? No, use the microphone, use the microphone.
Those are, those are columns there, so that's not a thick wall. That's open, so there's no like invisible spaces or dark alleys or something like that.
Okay, all right, I understand, thank you.
It's completely open, it's completely open garage. Next, we start jumping up into typical floor... Oops, we skipped one. Did we skip one? Yeah, we did. The, could we go down, go back one slide? This is one of the typical residential floors. There we go, thank you. So there you get an idea of the scale of the community room, which is that big white box off on the right-hand side that opens up right out into the courtyard space, and then units start wrapping around from there. We have laundry facilities, I think we have them on every floor. Two, we split the elevators, so we have two elevators. We think in a building of this scale, two elevators is really the right idea, for reasons you can all imagine. We did split them, though, so that people who are going out to go on the multimodal path can go down that elevator on the east side of the building, and then we have a central elevator right at the joint in the building.
And both of them accessible from the garage?
Yes, yep. Next, these are just the stacks of the units. Steve already told, we have twelve at one, forty-three at two, and eleven at three. We're also very excited about offering enhanced accessibility in the building. By code, we really, by state architectural access board, we only need three fully accessible units. We're providing six fully accessible units. All the remainder of the units in the building are what are known as group one, so they're adaptable units. So we see the way that we're planning this building is really providing, again, opportunities for long-term tenancy in the building by incorporating these kinds of universal design aspects to the building. Next, it pretty much matches from here on up. There's a little bit of variation, but not for any reasons that are probably of interest to you. And I think that may be it. I don't think we have a roof plan in here, do we? No, okay, so I think I pass it, pass it back to Steve at this point.
So I'll just sort of talk about, you know, kind of the non-physical changes. So again, the big change we're asking for in terms of relief is additional parking, and it's really because we put the parking underground, we lost a couple parking spaces doing that, but we picked up significantly more open space. So we think the trade-off is really, you know, an eighty percent increase in open space with a relatively small reduction for parking. Next slide.
Let's ask a question about the parking. Is the parking deeded to the unit or part of the unit, or how, is it just first come, first served?
Yeah, you know, we typically don't have a one-to-one car ownership, which we'll get into soon. So we'll usually include, you know, a parking space if folks need it with their rent, and then the rest will be kind of open. So that's typically how it works. We can go to the next slide. So then, you guys have seen variations of this before, and you know MAPC did this perfect-fit parking initiative where they looked at municipalities in greater Boston. They pulled out twenty different sites in Chelsea where they had folks show up at two or three in the morning and count the empty parking spaces. And again, we kind of broke it into the total of the twenty properties in Chelsea, and then we divided them into the rental and condos. And again, you can see all those ratios are significantly lower than the 1.1 that we've approved. And maybe most importantly, you know, TND's own properties in Chelsea, the four sort of larger thirty-plus unit sites, you know, that, there's ninety units there, there's sixty-eight parking spaces. And interestingly, our most recent occupied building at 242 Spencer has the lowest car ownership rate. I don't know what that means, but it's also a lot farther from public transportation. Next slide, please. And this just kind of shows that, and I guess actually we didn't even pull in the Acadia on that other one. So again, it shows where our car ownership rate is versus what we're proposing here. Next slide, please. And then, as I said, of course, it's one block away from the Eastern Ave Silver Line Station and several other buses that are in sight. So we think it's a, you know, a good location for people who want to live without a car, or who may need to live without a car, to still access jobs and other amenities. Great. And then finally, the need for affordable housing. One thousand five Broadway is under construction across from the Walgreens in Beth Israel. We took nineteen hundred twenty-seven applications for those thirty-eight units, so it really speaks to the demand for family housing in Chelsea. And according to zumper.com, two-bedroom apartment rents in Chelsea have jumped up nineteen percent in the last year, which is unbelievable. Next slide, please. And again, this still meets three of the five goals called out in the comprehensive housing analysis plan. Retaining existing residents through creation and preservation and maintenance of affordable housing. Obviously, we're creating them here. Increasing the supply and variety of mixed-income housing choices to support Chelsea's current and future residents. Again, the seventy percent local preference, the strong inclusion of thirty percent AMI units for seventeen of the units. And then again, fostering a continuous discussion and collaboration among residents, city officials, city departments, nonprofits, again, where a nonprofit developer proposing this. And that's it, we'll just close on the project summary slide, and we're happy to take questions.
John, do we have any letters, other than that letter of support on, for this?
No, we've not received any yet.
We haven't received any at this point, okay? Do we, before I open it up to the public, do we have questions from the board? And again, keep in mind that this will be going back to the planning board on the twenty-third and back to us in September. So is there anybody on the board who has questions? You go.
How many of those apartments will be sixty percent AMI?
Forty-nine, so seventeen will be at thirty percent, and the other forty-nine will be at sixty percent.
That includes their bedroom, two bedrooms, are those numbers?
That's a good question. I know that two of the thirty percent AMI units have one bedroom, and fifteen have two or three, but I don't remember off the top of my head the breakdown between that. We really wanted to prioritize those for families.
Now, that community room you said is big enough to fit everyone in the building, the whole family?
Yeah, so that's, that's actually an interesting question. So we designed it to have, we tried to design to have at least twenty-seven square feet per residential unit, so that in theory, again, we don't actually expect that every single person will live there, but assuming that like fifty percent of the residents show up to a meeting, that that actually has room to accommodate everybody in seats. So if everyone showed up, that might have to be standing room only instead, but we also, it spills out to the open space. So it would be great if everyone showed up to something, but I think we have enough space to accommodate anyone who would reasonably show up.
Is that community open space or just open space for the residents?
The way we do it for security reasons is we're happy to make the space available to the public, to members of the public. We just need a reservation so we know and we can provide access. So they won't, that, the door from the community room will be locked, you know, the door into the community room will be locked from the outside, just like the rest of them, but certainly happy to accommodate people.
Any other questions before I open it up? Go ahead.
What about parking for like visitors or guests kind of thing? Will there be like assigned spaces for...
Yeah, so we still anticipate that we're building more parking than we need. So I think we would, you know, we'll number all the parking spaces, and, you know, I think we'll figure out a way to make it clear which ones are available for guests.
And the elevators, they're both passenger elevators, there's not, no freight elevator there?
No, they're both passenger elevators.
Okay, passenger. And I saw in the, one of the slides, the roof you said solar paneling on one side, what's going up on the other side?
Those will mostly be mechanical systems, like the air source heat pumps that basically condensers for them.
Great. Okay, I'm going to open up to the public. Oh, no, I'm sorry, John?
Steve, I didn't see a design for your access to Bellingham. So, next meeting, could you bring something to show how that access is going to be allowed? It's very important to the city that we activate that Bellingham Street frontage.
Yeah, do you mean, do you mean a rendering of what that'll look like?
Yeah.
Okay, great, because there, on the floor plan, it's clear that there's a door there, but we can, I can show you a rendering.
It's two barely legible lines on the floor plan.
Yeah, understood.
Okay.
We can provide a rendering for the next meeting.
So is that the exit onto Bellingham Street? The entrance is on Cottage Street, right?
It's just a door into the building, it's not a vehicular entrance. So there'll be, there'll be multiple entrances. The main entrance will be on Cottage Street. There'll be an entrance in that stairwell that we sort of showed that's closest to the Greenway, so that somebody can come right off there into the garage or the residence. There'll be an entrance on Bellingham Street, and then there'll be, also be, I guess, two entrances into this sort of courtyard space, one from the main building and one from the community room.
So I was referring to the garage, so the entrance is...
So there's only one entrance into the garage, that's off Cottage Street.
Anyone else before I open it? Does the city manager wish to speak on this? No, wait, first the city manager, then it's your turn. I assumed that you were here, did you want to speak on this?
I'll have more to say at the September meeting, but I will tell you that the city administration is fully supportive of this project. It meets our affordable housing goals, and it is a vast improvement over the project that was previously approved by the board.
Thank you very much.
We're in full support.
Now I'm going to open it to the public. When you get up, you need to get up in front of the microphone, and you have to say your name and address. You're going to get up in front of the mic, you can speak, you're welcome, why don't you get up in front of the microphone? Or can somebody bring her the microphone? And you can give us your name and address, please. Whoops.
That's as much as I've got.
Is that it? My question is almost like Joan's.
But first, ma'am, please, first introduce, tell me your name and address, please.
Minicarice Moreno, 165 Cottage.
And please talk to the board, not to her, okay, not to them, ask us.
Face them this way.
Face us, face the board, ask us. Okay, go ahead.
And put the microphone closer to your mouth.
It's being taped.
But then you can't understand anybody.
Well, we can understand you first, fine, now, so let's try that, go ahead.
I've been against this since, what, four years now it's going on? When the original people were going to build, they were sending, you know, all these wonderful things that were going to happen, and of course, they didn't even get the money to continue. So then these gentlemen, whoever, took it over. I want to know, you're having parking for how many cars, seventy-something? Do you have any idea the space between Willow and Eastern? The traffic coming up and down, and you're saying they're going to be going in through Cottage and the same on Bellingham? There's no room for the cars to get in and out. Did you think of that?
We're going to, it's not, it's just to express your opinion. We're not going to have a conversation, just tell us what your concerns, we're happy to hear them, but we're not going to get into a debate about it over here, okay? I said, no, just tell, we're happy to hear what you have to say, but we're not, it's not a question and answer, okay? We want you to give us your opinion, and then we'll listen to everybody's opinion and wait in.
They're not going to answer me, is that what you're saying?
That's not what I'm saying, I'm saying, we're not here to have a conversation back and forth. We're here to hear your opinion, and we're happy to hear it.
Well, my opinion is, it's too small, the area that they're, you know, this beautiful building and everything like that. There's not enough room for cars to go up and down.
Thank you, no, and thank you, that's what we wanted to hear, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak on this? Go ahead, sir, please give your name and address, please. And the reason you have to speak into the microphone is because it's being recorded, so if you're not in the microphone, we can't hear you, so...
Okay, my name's Ralph Ainusi. I own the building on 99 Willow Street, the sixteen unit. I've been a landlord in Chelsea for the last fifty years. A lot of the questions I may ask right now are redundant, because we never had any previous, it's the first time I've seen the site plans. So I'd like to ask a few questions if I could.
Sure.
Is this building, is it fully sprinkled departments also?
Please answer with verbally, yes, yes.
Okay, and the elevators, how many people does it hold? Yeah, how many people is that?
You're going to have, you guys are going to have to share the microphone.
Oh, I'm sorry. Was it eight?
We have a spec, yeah, but I think it's probably their stretcher compliant elevators, so I, eight people, maybe?
Okay, so you're expecting three hundred people to use two elevators with eight people in each up and down?
We think two elevators is the right number for this number of units.
Okay, you said it's an exit on Bellingham Street, so where are they going to go on to the second floor?
Bellingham is a level up, that's right.
On the back of the building where the four houses are, you say you took the retaining wall, oh? That's kind of a steep grade, that's just going to...
Yeah, there was, there was a pretty massive retaining wall, because, in the original plans, because there was a driveway there. So that needed to be relatively level. And obviously, it's much higher at the Bellingham Street side. So there was about a, I don't remember exactly, sixteen to eighteen-foot retaining wall that was holding that back. So now we can have a much more gradual slope and a much more gradual wall that still makes sure that those structures are going to stand up, but it's not, I mean, that would have been pile driving and right on the property line.
So you don't believe that it's going to have erosion with that steep grade?
I, I think this will be better, no, I don't think there's going to be erosion.
Okay, in the winter, when you guys plow, where are you going to put your plow, snow? Seeds are going to be blown. I think, I've been here fifty years in the city of Chelsea, and right now, at four-thirty, five o'clock at night, there isn't a parking space to be had in any of the side streets. You know, you're going to add maybe fifty, sixty more cars to this conclusion?
It's an underground parking spot, that's it, it's underground parking.
Yeah, there's only seventy, seventy-one cars, you've got sixty-six people, everybody with two cars, you're still going to have fifty people without parking spaces, okay? Tonight, you're going to put these cars in the mix of all these people that have cars. You know, it's a recipe for disaster. So, again, where do you plan to put your snow? You're going to have a truck, though, or are you planning to plow it?
Well, the streets are, they're not responsible for the streets, so I mean, that's...
No, they are responsible for the parking spot. You can't have, I got twenty-two parking spaces. I put my snow in the yard, not on the street.
But they have indoor parking, so their parking space that they're asking for is underground, so they're not hopefully going to need to plow.
There's a parking space there that had, how many cars outside?
All of the parking is inside.
All of it's inside?
In the, in the former, in the former proposal, a section of parking was outside, we've eliminated that, we've put it all underground.
So it's all inside?
That's correct.
Okay. Again, they try to sell us that the silver line is going to relieve the overflow of people. If you watch that silver line, if you see three or four people on that bus a day, you know, so people aren't using the silver line, they're going to be looking for their cars, and that's going to be a major thing on... for their cars. And that's gonna be a major thing on parking in that area. So, you know, I personally believe that a building this size, or that close to this size lot, is gonna be a tragedy. I think the planning board should send it back, put a building, thirty units, hundred percent parking. That would be something that the city could be proud of. I don't think this unit, this overflow of people is gonna be good for the, the city, for the neighborhood, and for the people living there. But, again, I wish the planning board would reconsider it, having to come back with a, you know, a more reasonable plan, and something that I think works. Because this here is definitely gonna be a problem to our neighborhood.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for sharing. Is there anybody else who wishes? Okay. Come on up, give your name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Janet Maniscalco. I'm at 165 Cottage. And my question is, are you going to have security since this is a low-income building?
We have cameras in our building, but we won't be hiring a security guard. It's not necessary in our other affordable buildings in Chelsea.
And I'm not happy about this, because I own-
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, say that again.
I own a unit at 165 Cottage, and I felt safe. And now that I'm going to have a low-income building across the street from me, I don't feel safe. Because I'm on the Cottage Street side, and I felt safe. If I have company, there's a place to park. Bad enough, they can't park in guest parking. If they have to park on the street, it's, I don't think it's a good idea to put a low-income housing project. I mean, the projects are coming down on Central Avenue, so they picked Cottage Street.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak on this? Again, this won't be your only opportunity. We're going to be, they're coming before us again on September thirteenth, so you'll have an opportunity to ask more questions or to make your points known. So, planning board, eight twenty-three. Zoning board, nine thirteen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next case that we're going to be taking is 2022-18, 68 Marginal Street, Pablo and Anna Castillo. And again, this is the first time we are hearing this, so it will go to the eight, planning board on eight twenty-three, and back here on nine thirteen.
You have a busy night. Good evening.
For the record, once again, please introduce yourself, sir. Introduce yourself.
David Midland, representing the petitioners, Pablo Castillo and Anna Castillo, who are the owners of sixty-eight Mar, sixty-eight Marginal Street.
Well, would you like to present the project to us? Sure.
Thank you. So, the property at sixty-eight Marginal, the Castillos have owned it for many years. Unfortunately, in December of last year, the building burned. Luckily, it wasn't totally destroyed, but it is uninhabitable at this point. The building is a non-conforming three-family in the up, in the waterfront Upland District, district that's intended to promote waterfront activities and the residential neighborhood. What the Castillos are contemplating is turning the three-family into a four-family. They currently occupy the second and, the second and third floors.
Correct.
As a duplex apartment, much more space than they need at this point in their lives. So, in the reconstruction, they would like to split those off and create a fourth unit.
Like, do they, are you planning to keep the height the same?
Height will be exactly the same.
So it's just that, rather than have two floors, you would have one floor, and you would rent another floor?
Correct.
Okay, the other floor, okay.
But the, the only-
But the top floor, which is now pitched, will be, be designed with a flat roof.
Okay.
So now it's dormered out, but it's occupied, and that's a rendering of the finished product with the flat roof. So there won't be any change to the height, but the profile of the building will change slightly. Also, the footprint, John, do you have the plot planner slide? I may need Anna to help me describe this, but the building is over here, sorry, that's the parking, that's why I need Anna. The building is here. There's an overhang from the third floor with open space underneath. So the only technical change to the footprint of the building would be to do a fill-in of that overhang space.
So you're gonna, so there'll be bigger livable space? More, more living-
Just a little more interior space. And then there's a shed here also, and that will be removed to give a little more room in the parking area. The parking won't change. There are currently six spaces. They would need, I have my notes over there, but eight, I believe, John, right? So they'd need two more spaces, so we'd need a variance for parking. The parking spaces, to some degree, are in the setbacks, but they've been there for years. They've been non-conforming for years, and again, there won't be any change to that.
So you're not planning to change the parking lot area?
No. No, there's a garage, one garage space. And again, the only change to the parking lot will be to remove the shed to just give a little more room there. And that's basically the, the project. They've been waiting and trying to work with the insurance company, and it's, it's been a long time coming, but they would like to reconstruct the building, continue to reside there, which is admirable, and add the one unit to better utilize the space within the building.
Is there a basement unit? Is that, is there, is it a basement unit and then three floors? Okay.
Yes.
Floor plans? Yeah, there are floor plans.
This is the existing first floor plan.
That's the existing second, existing third.
And so which floor is it that, that you're proposing to live in, and which one are you proposing to convert? Three or four?
Um-
Talk into the microphone.
All the way on the third, on the third floor.
So you'll live on the third floor, and then you'll rent the fourth. So the fourth, you'll have to turn into a regular-
Correct.
-apartment, okay?
So just to clarify, the roof is gonna stay flat, because prior to the, to the fire, it was pitched. So that's not gonna be rebuilt, it's just gonna stay flat?
Yeah, the pitch part is dormered, so that's occupied now, and that'll be built out, and the side walls will be extended up to the new roof, but the height will remain exactly the same.
So what, you'll have more space this way, but not this way?
Correct.
Okay, all right.
I, I believe there are pictures there, too, John. I don't know if you skipped through them.
Oops.
Is that the one you're looking for?
So, if you can see it, the pitch is here, and this is dormered out. So this will be coming out to the facade of the building on both sides.
Maybe this one shows it better. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so basically, where that, where the dormers are, you, they will be flat across the top?
Exactly. So it'll come out here and down. Instead of just the dormers, this'll all be filled, that'll all be part of that unit.
So the height won't be different, but the, the appearance will be different?
Correct. The square footage will be different, but the height will not be. And again, only that small bump out, it's not even a bump out, it's a filling in of the overhang on the side of the building.
And, is that open space?
The garage is one of the parking spaces.
They're already deficient in open space.
I, I thought you were, is that, I thought that was balcony, but that's not-
No, that's, that's the area that we filled in.
Oh, that's the area that we filled in. Oh, I see, yes. All right, that makes sense.
Yeah, there was a balcony.
And that's, that's the shed that you said will be, will go away?
No.
That's the garage.
Well, that's the garage, I'm sorry, okay. Okay. Any other questions before I open it up to the public?
The building will be demolished completely, and then started from the ground up, or?
No. It's gonna be stripped out. It's gonna be stripped out. It is already stripped out inside, and they just gonna build it up to make it straight. It's not gonna be demolished.
Okay, thank you.
On the proposed basement apartment, it's only one bathroom?
Yes, one bathroom.
And your plan shows two. Your plan is for the, for the new one?
Yes, because-
It shows two. So it's one or two ba, bathrooms?
On the, the new plan, the, right now, it's one bathroom.
On the new, on the new, on the new building, on the new construction, you're saying it's only one bathroom?
Is it going to be a one-bedroom or two-bedroom when you build it?
No, the bathroom-
Bathroom.
Bathroom shows, you say it's one, but the plan shows two. I can show you right here?
Yeah. Yeah, 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 because it's-
It shows two.
Where the, where the boilers and everything else, they're-
Guys, use, use the microphones. Okay. Are you talking about the additional unit you go?
On the proposed-
The new unit that they're proposing?
New unit, the basement.
In the basement, okay. You said in the basement?
The basement.
Oh.
So the basement will be two bedrooms, one bathroom. First floor will be three bedrooms, two bathrooms. Second floor, two bedrooms, two bathrooms, and the third floor, three bedrooms, two baths. So it'll be a total of ten bedrooms and seven bathrooms when done.
But, but the plan shows two bathrooms on the basement?
In the basement?
Yes, sir.
Can you show? Yeah. Take the microphone with you, sir, if you're gonna speak.
Microphone.
What, what is he doing?
This is, this is the basement.
Yeah, there's a bathroom in the middle, right, right in front, right there.
Right there.
And then there's a bathroom over the far left.
Bathroom right here, and a bathroom right here.
And this one, this is the one towards the toilet.
Oh, okay, 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 that's the, that's- Talk into the microphone, sir.
Yeah, that used to be the, it's almost off. Used to be the boiler room, but we left it up for tools, to put all the, you know, the snow machine, the shower, to clean the snow, whatever we needed in there. But, you know, the reason that I put a bathroom in there, because sometimes you're freezing in there. You have to have a place to warm up, or if you feel to go to the bathroom, you don't have to go and knock a door to somebody to, the whole body full of snow and dirty, go into the apartment, so you use the bathroom downstairs. But it's not like, this is not, belonged to the apartment, this is-
You're saying that's not part of the apartment?
No, it's not part of the apartment.
That's a separate, it's a separate standalone bathroom.
So you're saying, it's like a utility bathroom?
Utility bathroom, yeah.
Okay.
Like, it's in case you need a-
Utility bathroom, I said. Yeah, utility room.
But who, who's gonna utilize the computer room on the third floor? From the-
It's just ask if we are downstairs, not to run all the way up there if you're full of snow or anything like that.
Sometimes you clean the snow.
It's la, it's labeled computer room. It's not labeled utility room or storage. It's labeled computer room.
It says computer room on it.
Right, yeah. And there gonna be the monitor, all the cameras, control, gonna be in there too, just in case somebody go into the yard and break a car, so we can go downstairs, back up the camera, see what happens.
Who's gonna have the key to that door to get in there?
Just me.
Only you?
Just me.
So the only people who are gonna be able to get into that bathroom, and whatever you're gonna call the computer room, is gonna be you?
So that, that living area is associated with your third floor unit?
You might call that, yes.
No, it has to be. It is or it isn't. It's gotta be associated with something. It's not standalone. So it's either associated with the third floor or the basement. So it's an extension of the third floor, is what you're saying?
That is correct.
Does that make sense?
It does. I, I understand, that was not clear when you submitted the application, so I'm gonna have to change my report now.
Okay.
Fine, now, I now understand.
That might make some changes as John looks through it, because that's, that's, you're saying something separate there. It's not, you're basically, what you're saying, that your unit, the third floor unit, actually has another bathroom, is what, for all intents and purposes, you're saying.
And potentially another bedroom.
And a potential another bedroom, yeah, well. Okay, anybody else before I open it to the public?
You can't make that like a separate common area, John?
Pardon?
You can't consider that as a common area? Well, that would open it to everybody.
Well, the fact that it has a door that closes, it has a bathroom beside it, leads me to believe that it could be used as a bedroom.
So that's, yeah, that's a different concern, right. Is there anybody, this is not gonna be the only opportunity you're gonna have to speak on this, because this is going to the planning board next, in two weeks, and this, back here next month. Is there anybody who wishes to speak on this at this time, though? There being none, I'm going to continue the public portion of the hearing, planning board, the twenty-third, here on the thirteenth.
Thank you all.
Thank you. You can go home now, David.
I'm, I'm done.
The next case is 2022-19, 65 Shirliff Street, Mario Claros, for a public here, for a special permit to remodel the first floor unit, including the creation of additional living space into the basement to include an additional two bedrooms within the unit, which does not meet minimum requirement for off-street parking. Please introduce yourself and your address, and present your project to us.
I'm Albin Claros. This is my father, Mario Claros. He's asking for a permit to remodel the first floor unit at 65 Shirliff. That remodeling would include the creation of two bedrooms on the basement. So the two bedrooms on the basement, he doesn't plan to, to use them for anybody. He's, he's including those two units as bedrooms for the first floor. When he remodeled the first floor, he lost a bedroom by creating a dining room in there. So the reason for that, the two bedrooms on the basement, is because he wants the convenience of having a guest room for a relative that visits him from out of state. And he pretty much plans to add more parking space if that helps with the permit.
So how many bedrooms are there currently in the unit?
On the first floor unit, he has three bedrooms.
So this would make it five bedrooms?
Correct.
Okay. And you mind it for personal use and not to rent out?
No.
Your application says that the use is for occasional use and receiving visits from relatives. What do you mean by occasional use?
Occasional use for relatives, pretty much. We don't plan to furnish them. We, what the plan is to, you know, whenever we have a relative, accommodate them on one of those rooms. And nobody's gonna be living in there. That's the reason we, we mark them as occasional.
But, but your application says occasional and receiving visits from relatives. Is that a typo, or a, do you intend, do you intend to use it more than just for relatives?
No, it's just, just for relatives.
And the reason I ask is, if you're, do you intend to do a bed and breakfast or Airbnb there? If you do, you need additional permits.
Okay. So from what I understand, my father plans to just use them occasionally. He, he doesn't plan of having anybody living in there. And this is not gonna affect any of the neighbors. He just wants the convenience of having, like I said, an extra guest room for relatives when they, when they come visit.
Okay, thank you.
John, can we put the condition in?
You can.
Okay. Is there any, are there any other questions? Are there any questions here? You go.
Who use the washer and dryer? Everybody in the, on the building?
No, no, that's for the first floor only.
Okay, what's on the opposite side of the mechanical room right now? What's on the other side?
Those are boilers and-
Is, is empty?
It's storage. It's for storage, stuff that my father has, and, and it's not been, actually leaving a space in there. It's just pretty much a storage.
Now, you have half a bathroom in the basement? And you're gonna put a full, and you're gonna put a full bathroom? Is that right?
Yes.
Okay, this, we're not gonna be voting on this today.
Well, it's public.
I know, I'm just, just telling them that I'm gonna open it to the public, but we're not gonna be voting on this today, that it's gonna go to the planning board. You have to go to the planning board on the twenty-third of August, and then back here on the thirteenth of September. And I'm gonna open it up to the public, and then they will have the opportunity to speak on this now and later. So is there anybody who wishes to speak on this? There being none, I'm gonna continue this hearing, so people will have the opportunity to speak about it next month. You have to go to the planning board on the twenty-third of August, okay?
Thank you.
Can I ask one more question?
You go, of course.
Yeah. On the side, do you wanna build the, the two ba, ba, bedrooms? Okay, you have the mechanical room- Okay, you have the mechanical rooms there, right, the boilers and all that stuff?
Yes.
Does it make any reason why you're gonna put the new bedrooms on there instead of having it across where you have all the storage?
No, it's just for the convenience of having the other side as, you know, as one whole room, instead of, uh, building the, the two bedrooms on that side. It's just, just for the convenience of, uh, using the space the best way possible.
And no one's gonna have access to this other than the first floor?
Correct.
None of the tenants upstairs are gonna be going downstairs for anything, for the laundry machines or nothing?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Next, two weeks, planning board, back here next month.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. The next case is twenty twenty-two twenty-one seventy-five Orange Street, Jean and Ramona Borgonyon, for special permit, seeking approval for a driveway opening permit, which does not meet the City of Chelsea zoning ordinance, which states that parking of a vehicle is not permitted within the five foot from a rear property line, nor within five feet of a side property line. And again, this is the first time we're hearing this, so we won't be voting on it today. You will instead go to the planning board on the twenty-third of August, and here, back here, and September thirteenth. So for the record, please tell us your name and address, please speak into the microphone, and tell us about your project.
Good evening, my name is Ramona Borgonyon, this is my husband Jean Borgonyon. We own a property at three twenty Carter Street, and part of our property has, um, a piece of land that sits on, on one seventy-five Orange Street. So we are respectfully requesting permission to, um, build a driveway that will allow us to hopefully contribute to, in a positive way, to the parking situation in the City of Chelsea, um, by being able to park some of our vehicles, uh, back there. Our home has a very tiny driveway, literally to park, I, we have to put the mirrors in, because it's, it's that, that narrow. And, um, it doesn't have, it doesn't have enough room for our personal vehicles. My husband has a four F-one fifty truck, and he has to park it on the street, because it doesn't fit on our driveway. So we feel that, um, that dead space that is sitting there currently on use, um, could be better used to allow us to park our vehicles and, you know, let the on-street parking to.
And how many spaces do you, how many cars do you wanna put in there?
It's, uh.
Talk in the microphone.
Sorry. Uh, we're looking at about three to four, uh, vehicles.
Okay.
The applica-.
You have to pick a number.
Your application says four to six.
Oh, sorry, no, it has space.
It has a space.
Yeah.
Well, you're gonna have to tell us what number you want, because you'll need relief to know how many, how many spaces, you can't.
Three to four, exact number?
Yes, we're gonna need, you have to tell us right now, but you're gonna need, when, when the thing gets decided, if we, if we vote on it, we're gonna tell you how many you can have, so.
Right.
Tell us what you want.
It's primarily to park our truck, as I said, and then obviously when we have visitors, um, it's really a challenge for, for them to find parking space. And the street.
No, I'm, I'm not, I'm not questioning the challenge of parking in Chelsea, I'm just saying that you have to tell us a number, because that's the permit, that's what a permit says.
Of course.
You can park four, or two, or three, or six, or whatever, we decide is the right number, but you need to tell us what you're looking for, so we can decide on that, it's just not a guess, so you have to tell us.
Understood, yes.
And plus, it asks you to figure out what fits in there, that's the flip side of it, so. Okay, that's, I'm sorry, so that's, so you're, so that's basically what you're trying to do, you wanna, you wanna curb cut, that would take one parking space off the street, but would provide four parking spaces.
Correct.
Roughly.
Correct.
Given your picture.
Yes. And this is the, this is the lot, um, so this is the back of our home, as I said, it's, it sits on Orange, but we live on Carter, so it connects to the back of our home on Carter Street. Um, there are no neighbors to the right of it, um, and we've spoken to all of our neighbors, uh, on our side of the street, and, you know, they're, they're welcome that, because as I said, it's gonna help them, as well as us.
Like better photos.
So that's where they're looking for the curb cut?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So you're just next to the highway, alright, or the street. Okay, is, are there any questions?
Well, parking is for the tenants, for you and the tenants, or just, just for you?
Yes, yes, it's a single family home, yes. We just don't have enough parking, even for ourselves.
Uh, but that doesn't look like, but is there anybody here who wishes to speak on this? Oh, John, John, John wishes to speak on this.
Uh, I'm sorry, I wanna get back to your plan, there, there it is. Your plan shows just four symbols for cars, it doesn't show what you're paving. How much of this yard are you paving?
Paving?
Yeah.
Uh, we're looking at paving the whole thing.
This, this, this entire, this entire triangle, you wanna pave the entire triangle? This, this, you wanna pave this entire area here?
No. It's this area that we're.
Right, so you wanna pave all of that?
Yeah, so we're looking at, well, probably we're looking at, you know, maybe paving out some here, and, you know, just some grass, and a green area, you know, like we're finding.
And how, how would you get to your house, would you block down Orange to Carter, or would you cut, just cut through?
Uh, we have, there is a gate here.
Okay.
So this is all, all of this is, is a yard, and it goes connecting.
Oh, yeah, he's not using the microphone. Thank you.
Thank you.
Somebody's been paying attention.
So, this, this here connects to, uh, to it, it's, as you can see, it's a, uh, triangle shape. So this is the back of our house, and there's a, actually, a car can actually fit all the way here to, into our backyard, if, if, uh, that's how, you know, wide that is.
Well, we don't, I, we're not big fans of making everything.
No, we're not doing that, what I'm saying, yeah.
And, and you're, and you're looking for a fifteen-foot wide driveway?
Uh, yes.
Curb cut?
Yeah.
Alright, thank you.
Okay, this.
Is that a garage on the, on the corner, the, it has a garage? Is that garage?
We use it more, we use it more for storage, 'cause it's so hard to get the car in there, just because it's so narrow, then it's really hard to pull it out.
For cars?
No.
No.
It's not big enough.
Okay.
It's a storage area.
Storage, okay.
I have a Mini in, the Mini fits in there, but doesn't have room for more than that.
Are you planning to have any gate on the, for the garage, I mean, for the apartment, new parking, or just have it open?
No, we'll, we'll have a gate, yes.
You'll have a gate?
Yes. Yes, yes.
And right now, at this point, that, this whole area.
Talk in the microphone.
That old area, that, that whole area right now is, actually, when we bought, first bought the house, it, um, it was basically like a dump. Um, there was, uh, people from the streets would be throwing things up there and inside, it would, I have, I've cleaned it about twice, uh, removing old TVs and I have, you know.
Construction debris.
Construction debris, uh, everything, people would just go by and throw it, because they realized that it was like, it looks like an abandoned air, you know, um, uh, area. And so, we're trying to beautify it, you know, actually, from that block on Orange Street, it's, it's pretty much the first property, if you wanna call it, that, uh, on Orange Street, going up by, behind the high school.
But how many trees would you lose?
How many what?
Are you gonna lose trees?
Oh, yes, yes, uh, that's another, um, the trees is another, uh, issue, because it's liability, that we have a couple of huge trees that are leaning towards the, uh, neighbors.
That's our neighbors are so in favor of it, because they're worried about their property, the trees.
And I have one neighbor who, who told me basically that she, every time he, you know, it's, there's a storm that she's like worried about, like, branches will fall off, fall on, uh, her property. So this is also part of that, we'll clean all of that area, and pretty much beautify it, like we said, make it nice, and, um, you know, and at the same time, making, uh, some parking spaces available.
Okay.
Parking spaces.
Any other questions?
Will you add like lighting and signage?
Money?
Have you thought about that, like lighting, lighting or signage?
Um, yes.
We're gonna have to, yes.
Yes. Yes, we would definitely would do that.
Because we're gonna be entering through that area.
You're gonna have a sign, I think a sign that says private property at a minimum.
Right.
Because we'll be entering, if approved, we'll be entering through here, so we're definitely gonna have the proper lighting. And we've also noticed some, you know, undesired activity.
Like if you don't want trespassers or people parking there that are not supposed to park there.
Right, right, et cetera, yes. So we're hoping that as people see more activity, and that people actually live there, there will be less loitering and some of the stuff that currently goes on now.
Talk in the microphone.
The highway project that just, uh, completed, being completed, you know, kinda, pretty much, uh, this whole area is really very nice, you know, um, but as far as, you know, this part of our area here, it's not, you know, we're trying to make it maybe like a continuously, you know.
It's kind of an ISO right now.
Yeah, it's an ISO, basically, really. Uh, as you can look at it, this picture is all a bunch of trees, and then all this area here, this is not, it's pretty clean right now. Uh, 'cause like I said, I've cleaned it twice, but, you know, otherwise you wouldn't see like broken TV and, uh, doors and, like, you know. Yeah, trash, everything, like people use it and just dumpster it.
They think it's a place nobody owns. Great, I, I don't think that's the case, but is anybody here who wishes to speak on this? There being none, I will continue the public portion of this hearing, you're gonna go to the planning board, as I said earlier, on the twenty-third of August, and back here on the thirteenth of September, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And last but not least, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two dash twenty-one, six fifty-five Washington Ave, Silk Red Harvest LLC, for a special permit seeking approval to establish a parking area and curb cut, which does not meet the City of Chelsea's own, or zoning ordinance, which states that the parking of a vehicle is not permitted within the required front yard setback of a property, nor within five feet of a side lot set by, set line, lot line. This also includes per City of Chelsea zoning ordinance, no entrance or exit from any off-street parking area, with four or more parking spaces shall be located within fifty feet of an intersection on any two street lines. Again, this is the first time, so you'll be going on the twenty-third of the planning board, and back here on the thirteenth. Please introduce yourself and your project.
Absolutely, my name is Christopher Kreider, good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board. Uh, I am from D'Ambrosio LLP, with me are the owners of, uh, Silk Red Harvest LLC, they, and these are actually the developers with C E M Construction as well. This is Eduardo Maticino and Carlos Maticino. Essentially, this property is predominantly within the Revere jurisdiction, because a majority of the property, and pretty much the entire structure that's being built, is in Revere. The portion of the property that we're actually looking is just a little corner off of the, uh, edge there, that will house essentially two parking lots, or two parking spaces, and what will be the egress, actually, to, uh, Prospect Avenue. Uh, we are obviously seeking those, uh, the, uh, special permits for the parking, so that we can ensure that the entire property itself has twenty-four spots for sixteen one-bedroom units. So it has enough for each of the residents, plus, uh, a number of spots for guests and accessible units as well. One of the accessible units is actually located in the Chelsea property right there, as is the walk, the separation between the two accessible units as well. Uh, so we wanna ensure that there is sufficient parking, that none of the residents really have any sort of need to park on the street. We're trying to keep everyone, all the residents, guests, parking in the unit itself.
I'm kidding, I'm kidding, I'm kidding.
And obviously, uh, in terms of the curb cut, we are seeking the special permit for that, uh, mostly just in order to maintain two access, two access and egress points for, for the property itself. Uh, ideally, the goal and what the, uh, plan actually shows is the entrance actually coming from Washington Avenue, where the exit would actually go out onto Prospect Avenue, so that it's a little bit easier for folks to make that turn at the intersection right there. I believe there's a light right there as well, if I remember correctly, no, there's not, I know that there was a restaurant right across the street, but, okay. Uh, but hopefully just make it a little bit easier for folks to get in and out of the property itself. Uh, I'm happy to answer any questions, and if there's anything else that we can certainly, uh, answer for you, I'm certain we'll be.
So John, fill us in on, on what this sort of means, 'cause it's sort of, it's an odd, it's an odd situation.
It is, I mean, I think this is only, this is one of very few lots in the city that are divided by the, the town property, the town line with another city. So this is a portion that is under your jurisdiction, whatever goes on here, you have no say over. It's only this, and in this case, it's a, uh, park, a parking space, uh, in Chelsea parking spaces can't be within five feet of the side lot line, it's on the zero lot line. Spaces cannot be within the required setback, and the I want the required setback is, is twenty feet, obviously, that's not twenty feet. And then, uh, the curb cut has to be set back at least fifty feet from the intersection, at this point, it's twenty-eight feet. So that's, those are the three concerns, the parking, um, adjacent to the side lot line, parking within the front yard, and the curb cut within fifty feet of the intersection.
So what, is there a fence, so is there a fence or something that separates anything? I mean, I mean, that's, the street, not from, not Revere, from Chelsea.
No, there is.
I mean, on the street.
There is no fence proposed, in my report, I've, uh, suggested that they do put a fence there, so that these, this car is not parking on the street, on sidewalk.
On the sidewalk, absolutely.
Oh, okay.
And that's certainly something that my clients would, uh, be willing to consider at that point, and I, I would imagine that would probably come up during the planning board as well.
So we can certainly look at any conditions that the planning board would certainly try to impose.
And we're talking three cars, right, that technically?
Yep.
I believe it's only the one and a half spaces, so it's, uh, if I may.
There's the line, so that you got the full space here, and then you got about a half a space here, and a very, very small portion of the separating, the, um, access for the.
For the accessible, yes.
So all that's, really, basically, all that's on this relative for Chelsea's point of view is parking spaces, I mean, there's just parking spaces, and, and we're hopefully for a few plans and a, a fence.
And this is, uh, just low, yeah, low landscaping right there, and then, yeah, obviously, the access and egress onto Prospect Avenue.
Now, the, the reason why we have no, um, parking on the lot line, one is so they don't park on the sidewalk, but also so they don't, um, interfere with the butters' uses. Well, there is no butter there, so it's not really a, a big concern. And then, um, why, the reason you don't have in the front yard, again, usually you want some open space along the front yard.
This technically kind of isn't really a front yard.
Technical, correct. And then the reason that you have this, um, the fifty-foot setback is so that vehicles entering and leaving are not coming out, and, and they have adequate storage on this before they could take their right, but also so they're not coming out and just making a, a move without stopping. There's six lots on the street, if there were more than that, I'd be more concerned.
I was gonna say, 'cause that's the only thing that, from my point of view, that would give me pause slightly, because you just, you know, you don't wanna put that in, but if there's only six houses, then it's.
And the fact that they are having a one-way circulation through there, so it's not as if cars are coming in, you know, trying to zip in, they're just exiting.
Okay, alright, that makes sense. Any questions?
Is there any driveway at the end of that street, uh, Prospect?
On driveways at the end of that street, I believe farther down there are, and then on this side of the street, there are, I believe, some garages, and driveway going in this way, driveway going in this way for these two properties on the corner. Which I believe are, uh, multifamily properties as well.
Now, that will be an exit and entrance, right, the, on the Chelsea side will be an entrance and out.
Just an exit.
No, that's the exit.
Just the exit, just the exit.
On the, um, the Chelsea side, on this side of the sidewalk, with the bushes, you can see three bushes.
Right here?
Right, yeah.
Along Washington Avenue?
Um, I see some of the one-eleven bus parks sometimes, in that.
I'm sorry?
I see some buses on the one-eleven from.
Okay.
In that park, and in this house here in the corner, they park there, so my point is, I know when this construction goes in and out, probably they won't park there, but um, sometimes they block this driveway.
Okay.
When they park there, so I, I.
I, I believe, this driveway you're speaking of? I believe there's a fence.
Especially the corner, so if you're gonna have people going in and out, or out, um, if the bus still parks there on this side, on this corner here, at the house.
Oh, this side, okay.
So that would be any, you know, they will have a blind spot, they cannot see where the cars coming from Chelsea going to Revere.
I, I, I understand, yes. I mean, ideally, that's part of the reason why we are seeking the special permit, so that we do have the adequate parking for our residents, so they don't have to use that street parking there. So we don't necessarily believe that they'll be necessary, that our residents would have any need to park on those particular properties. Unfortunately, I can't necessarily speak for those who would be, uh, using for the one. Unfortunately, I can't necessarily speak for those who would be using for the 111 or parking, who would normally park in, illegally park in the lot that's there now. So I, but I can certainly speak for the residents of the property as well.
Well, they wouldn't be able to get a Chelsea sticker to park on that street because they don't have a Chelsea address and they're not registered in Chelsea.
May I speak, please?
Introduce yourselves again formally, I'm sorry, for the record. What's your name again?
My name's Eduardo and.
Eduardo what?
Matozinho.
Okay.
And I just wanted to point it out that the house in the corner has no driveway. It's a, I believe, three-unit building and it's not on the way of the access of cars driving by. And it's facing, yeah, you see?
So where that truck is, is the part we're talking about?
Yes.
That corner?
Correct. And the house in the corner is across the street. So.
Obviously, that's.
And there's a do not park sign.
February.
And it's a dead-end street.
Okay. Right, thank you. Any other questions?
On the right side, behind us, the only house is just that house. Thank you.
Is that a Chelsea house?
No, it's Revere.
That's Revere? Okay. There's clearly nobody here to speak on this, but I'm not going to close the public portion of the hearing. You know the dates, you've heard me say it, 23rd, 13th. See you then.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Have a great evening, everyone.
Do I have a motion to adjourn? Just made by Joe, seconded by Marilyn. And all in favor, aye. Ricky, go home.